Stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in my heart.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Jones.
Here.
Counselor Geisler.
Here.
Counselor Jelly.
Here.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Here.
Mayor Boucher.
Here.
Announcements? Do any counselors have announcements they'd like to give for the greater good this evening? Uh, I'd just like to encourage everyone to drive safely now that school is back in session. Uh, we, we have re- city representatives that might be watching if you don't. Hopefully, they won't be needed. Uh, Mr. Mulder, can you give us a short synopsis of the presentation at pre-agenda?
We'll be asked in two weeks to set the preliminary levy on the preliminary, uh, budget, um, with a final, um, approval in December. We'll hold, uh, the truth intent, what's called the truth and taxation hearing, the first, uh, meeting in December, um, and ask for budget approval later. Um, but not right now, the budget is, um, the tax rate is up in one point one seven percent, um, and we will focus on doing some long-term financial planning and maintaining a strong workforce.
Thank you, um. Consent agenda, we have, uh, minutes approval or correction of August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, city council continuation minutes. And accounts payable, approved general city warrants from August sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, in the amount of two million, one hundred thirty-one thousand, six hundred thirty-seven dollars and fifty-four cents. Do we have a motion? Motion by Counselor Geisler, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jones. Roll call, please.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. The second reading of an ordinance, ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash zero eight. An ordinance amending Title II of the Hermantown City Code by amending the official zoning map. Uh, do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counselor LeBlanc, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jelly. Mr. Mulder, do we want Mr. Johnson to explain this?
Yes, please.
Eric, could you fill us in on this?
Yes, great, thank you very much. Uh, before us this evening, these are two parcels in the Sunnyview, uh, subdivision that are currently zoned P public. Uh, back in two thousand fifteen, these had been, uh, zoned to P public at that time from the original R three zoning. Uh, this property contains what's known as the former brand pet cemetery, which was active from nineteen sixty to the early two thousands. Uh, that, there's a new property owner associated with this land, and he's inquired and, and applied to rezone this property back to the original R three zoning like it had been prior to two thousand fifteen.
Any questions or comments from council? With no questions or comments from council, we'll open this up to, for public input. Is there anyone present in chambers or online that wishes to address this? If so, please start with your name and address. If you're in chambers, please approach the podium. If you're online, please raise your hand or state your name and address. Please step up to the podium, please, and, uh, give us your name and address.
Um, I was thinking, I'm I have a question there, and I was told that he's going with me, my, but he's been, he's been That's all, I'm asking a question here, yes, once they start heating up, can we go see if there's a marker there, because then, then when would we come to work? And, um, So that's one of my questions, and the other thing is, I looked up things about decomposure in bodies and animals, and, um, it takes nine to eighteen years for an animal, depending on the size, to totally decompose, but it does go in the soil. And my question is, how's that gonna affect the people on Sunnyville, Sunnyview Road with their wells? So I called the Minnesota Department of Health, she got back to me. And can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
And she did say that there are state laws sometimes with pets, how they're buried and stuff, but Minnesota doesn't really have anything with a pet cemetery. But it, she said that, um, she's, Sander calling from the Minnesota Department of Health, and you called about a pet cemetery that is being cited, and I was going to tell you that the only setback that we have regarding a graveyard basically is fifty feet to a grave site would be the required minimum distance to a water supply well between a grave site and a water supply well. So, is this gonna be fifty feet away? And my concern is for the residents that live there, because they do have well water. Now, my background basically is in health, and I ran a WIC program, so I know a lot about fetal development, and I know a lot about children. And sometimes if there's some kind of chemicals that show up, that may show up later on in their life with some kind of a disease. So, you know, is this water gonna be safe and is it gonna be? Are there chemicals from the dead bodies going into the soil that's going into the well? And, um, and are these chemicals safe? One of the chemical, chemicals that has come up is methane, I think it's methane. But there's a, there's a lot of them, and they're on that site, they, they do name the chemicals. So those are my questions. Basically, is there any way we can get the little plaque, my kids want it, not me, but, you know, that of his death? And, um, and what about the, the health of these people who live on that road? That's all I have to say.
Couple, a couple of things that may help is there is no plan to do anything with that property at this point, other than rezone it back to what it was zoned for. Uh, your question on the chemicals, uh, would be more appropriate if we were establishing a pet cemetery versus dealing with one that's already there. Now, I don't think there's a problem in you getting any kind of uh, access to pick up a marker or anything in the future. That's something you could arrange with the property owner, and I think the city, uh, official in charge of that could put you in touch with that person. Uh, as far as chemicals, that's something that if what you say is, your question is, is already there.
Yeah, it is.
So, it's something that could be dealt with later by health authorities if there's a problem, but right now, we're not approving any plan for that property. We're only approving the zoning back to what it was zoned for originally. And that's at the request of the landowner.
Going there now, un- unless they would mow, I mean, you can't, I didn't even recognize it, really. I had to ask a neighbor, where is it? Because I couldn't, I couldn't even recognize it, that's not what I remember it being at all, and so she showed me and yeah, I did say that the lady up until she died, she was like, became disabled, went there every day and sat with the animals for a few hours. So that was a real kind of heartbreaking, too. She had her heart and soul in it, but. Okay, so how do I get that person's number?
You speak with Mr. Johnson over here.
Okay, thanks.
And he'll get, he'll help you out with that. Is there any other public input on this ordinance in front of us? Is there any public input on ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash zero eight? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler. Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. And, uh, acknowledging my bad, I passed by public discussion. We need to go back and open up for general public discussion about any item not on the agenda, item eight on our agenda. Is there anyone that wishes to address the council about items not on the agenda? Is there anyone that wishes to speak to the council under general public discussion? Last opportunity for general public discussion, please state your name and address for the record. Hearing none, we'll move on to resolutions, resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one six eight. Resolution receiving preliminary engineering report and calling for a public hearing for Bill and Irv's Properties Incorporated. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Jelly, is there a second? Second by Counselor Geisler, Mr. Mulder?
So this first resolution is simply receiving a report for what's called Bill and Irv's property, which is the property, uh, along Highway fifty-three at the intersection of LeVake Bypass and Highway fifty-three. Um, that portion would not be included in the Hawkline Business Park, um, and the landowners would like to develop that. Um, they asked for an engineering report, um, and that gives you the estimate for that. Um, we are following the assessment process, though, uh, we would probably approve all these with the development agreement, which is next on your, um, agenda.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
Will this property be zoned differently or the same? Have we discussed that at all? I don't, we talked about Hawkline Business Park, I don't know if we talked about the other property.
We talked about, um, the Hermantown Business Park zone, and so we created that zoning district, but that property has not been rezoned yet.
But that zoning will encompass Bill and Irv's and Hawkline.
It probably will approve, it probably will, it be all of it.
Okay, and is that, will that affect the storage building that's already there? Will that be under the new zoning as well?
The storage building is outside of this business park, and whether that gets rezoned or not will be, will come up with that time.
Okay.
May or may not, I don't know.
Any other questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? If anyone wishes to comment or ask questions about resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one six eight, please start with your name and address. Any public input on two thousand twenty-four dash one six eight? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next is resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one six nine. Resolution authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver contract amongst Bill and Irv's Properties Incorporated, City of Hermantown, and the Hermantown Economic Development Authority. Do we have a motion? Move to approve. Motion by Counselor LeBlanc to improve is, to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jones, Mr. Mulder.
So the development agreement, um, simply has the requirement that Bill and Irv would pay for, um, a portion of the utilities that will serve that parcel. Um, in lieu of the assessment, we're just having a development agreement, um, this would then have them pay for, um, the improvements for that parcel.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Hearing none, is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one six nine? Is there any public input on the resolution authorizing a development agreement with Bill and Irv's, City of Hermantown, and Hermantown Economic Development Authority? Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one seventy. Resolution receiving preliminary inju- engineering report and calling for a public hearing for Hawkline Business Park. Do we have a motion? Motion by Counselor Geisler, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jelly, Mr. Mulder?
So this is, um, again, the same kind of situation where we're having the preliminary injury report that gives us the estimate for the construction of the utilities and infrastructure, um, for the business park, which is a thirty-five acres, um, on that very similar site, just kind of on, where the Bill and Irv property is carved out of.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council? Is there anyone from the public that wishes to comment on this resolution? Any public comment on the resolution receiving the preliminary engineering report and calling for a public hearing for Hawkline Business Park? Is there any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one seventy? Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler. Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one seven one. Resolution authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver a development contract amongst Hawkline Development LLC, the City of Hermantown, and Hermantown Economic Development Authority. Do we have a motion? Motion by Counselor Jones, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Geisler got him beat by just a hair. Mr. Mulder?
So this is, um, the development agreement where we outline who's paying for what in terms of the infrastructure development for that thirty-five acres. Um, it is envisioned that, um, the city would contribute some money for the, um, water improvements, the use of sales tax, which is a permitted statutory use, um, and then we would apply for a deed grant, which is your next resolution, and then the owners would be responsible for anything over and above those two, um, amounts.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Is there any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one seven one? Any public input on the development contract involving Hawkline Development LLC, the City of Hermantown, and the Hermantown Economic Development Authority? Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one seven two. Resolution authorizing and directing the city administrator and the assistant city administrator to execute and deliver a business development infrastructure application. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Jelly, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor LeBlanc, Mr. Mulder?
So this resolution would authorize us to submit, um, a grant application for this area for the infrastructure. Um, we're envisioning that the grant application will be for two million dollars to go toward the infrastructure. Um, if it is awarded, we'll have to come back here with a grant agreement.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on the resolution authorizing the city administrator and assistant city administrator to execute and deliver a business development infrastructure application? Is there any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one seven two? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler. Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one seven three. Resolution approving a special use permit for grading and filling within a natural shoreline overlay area. Is there a motion? Motion by Counselor Jones, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor LeBlanc, Mr. Mulder, would you like Mr. Johnson to address this?
Yes, please.
Great, thank you very much. So they have them before us, and we have two others that are special use permits as well. This is grading and filling in a shoreline area at, uh, Sheridan Road. It's associated with Mogi Lake that has a very large shoreline area with it. Uh, the subject property is totally encompassed within that natural shoreline area, but the proposed house structure as well as garage foundation greatly exceeds the minimum of one hundred and fifty foot setback from the, uh, ordinary high water level. So this does meet or exceed any of the required setbacks associated with the shoreline area.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council?
Happy to see single-family homes getting built.
Anything else? Is there any public input on this resolution? If so, please state your name and address. Any public input on the approval of a special use permit for grading and filling within a natural shoreline overlay area? Is there any public input for resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one seven three? Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler. Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Two thousand twenty-four dash one seven four, resolution approving special use permit for construction of an accessory structure with an excess, excess of twelve hundred square feet in the R three zoning district at fifty seventy-five Willoughby Lane. Three nine five dash zero zero one four dash zero zero one eight one, and imposing conditions thereof. Do we have a motion? Motion by Counselor Geisler, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jones, Mr. Mulder, should we have Mr. Johnson address this one?
Yes, please.
Eric?
Great, thank you again. Uh, this is a seven point three acre lot that's located on Willoughby Lane. Uh, the applicant's looking to do a nineteen hundred and twenty square foot, uh, accessory structure, i.e. garage, on this property. Willoughby Lane is interesting, the fact that it's actually a private drive within the city, one of the few that we have. Uh, the zoning district allows for up to thirty-five percent lot coverage, uh, within the R three zoning district, which this is zoned. With this proposed structure, as long as other structures on site, it brings this total up to two point six percent. So greatly underneath the, uh, maximum lot coverage that we have associated with it. Um, the proposed building will match the other buildings on this property, and there's no business activity, uh, that's associated with this proposed structure.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council? Hearing none, is there any public input on this resolution? Is there any public input on the resolution approving a special use permit for construction of an accessory structure in excess of twelve hundred square feet in an R three zone? Is there any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one seven four? Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next is resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one seven five. Resolution approving a special use permit for grading and filling within a natural shoreline area. Is there a motion? Motion by Counselor Jones, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jelly, Mr. Mulder, should we have Mr. Johnson again?
Yes, please.
So thank you again, this is the second part of the application that we just had with fifty seventy-five Willoughby Lane. Uh, this property, just like the one on Sheridan, is associated with the natural environment with Mogi Lake. In this case, uh, this actual property is on the other side of LeVake, so about the furthest point you can get away from the lake, but still be in the shoreline area.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council? Hearing none, is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input for the resolution approving a special use permit for grading and filling within a natural shoreline overlay area on Willoughby Lane? Is there any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one seven five? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one seven six. Resolution authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk to execute and de- deliver a development agreement with Jay Zirdan, Zirdan Builders for the Stebner Road Planned Unit Development Project. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counselor Jones, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jelly. Mr. Mulder?
Let's have Eric Johnson for one more time.
Thank you very much. Uh, this is a development agreement between the city and, uh, Mr. Zirdan or Zirdan Builders. Uh, what this agreement does for is the construction of the public infrastructure, i.e. the road, curb and gutter, utility sidewalk, and stormwater associated with this Stebner Road PUD project. Uh, the actual PUD was approved earlier this year, and the conditions associated with that approval, uh, still fall under that approval. Once again, this is just for the infrastructure, laying our timelines associated with it, eventual inspection and ownership associated with those as well. As part of this, there's a letter of credit required for the stormwater facilities that will need to be paid prior to the actual work being done out on the site.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on the development agreement with Jay Zirdan, Zirdan Builders? Do we have any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one seven six? Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler. Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one seven seven. Resolution approving pay request number four for road improvement district number five forty-one and five forty-two to Northland Constructors in the amount of two hundred eighty-five thousand, three hundred sixty-nine dollars and twenty-three cents. Do we have a motion? Motion by Counselor Geisler, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jelly, Mr. Mulder?
So this is just, uh, the pay request for the work that's been done on this project over the last month.
Okay, any questions or comments from council? Any public input on this resolution? Any public input on the resolution approving pay request number four for road improvement districts number five forty-one and five forty-two? Is there any public input on resolution two thousand tw- twenty-four dash one seven seven? Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next, resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one seven eight. Resolution authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver agreement between the Hermantown Police Department and the Hermantown Community Schools for police school liaison officer. Do we have a motion? Motion by Counselor Jones, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor LeBlanc, Mr. Mulder?
So we've had a school resource officer at the Hermantown Schools for, for decades, um, and this is just a, a renewal for that. Um, we did increase the costs, um, and to cover our costs, and the school district was, um, has already signed this agreement and have appreciated, uh, the, the partnership with the city.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Uh, I've had a little bit of experience with this contract, and I'd like to comment that I think it is a very good thing for the community, uh, for the relationship between our police and students and the city and the school district. Uh, it's built a lot of goodwill between us, and this comes at no cost to the city or its taxpayers, the momon collected pays for all of the wages and benefits for the officer for a nine-month period. Is covered by a safety levy, which is a separate levy put by the school district. Anything else from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on the resolution for the agreement between Hermantown Police Department and Hermantown Hermantown Police Department and Hermantown Community Schools for a police school liaison officer? Is there any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one seven eight? Roll call, please.
Councillor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Councillor Jones.
Aye.
Councillor Geisler.
Aye.
Councillor Jelly.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next is resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one seven nine. Resolution approving final plans and specifications and ordering advertisement for bids for the water main replacement project along Trunk Highway fifty-three between Airport Road and Cirrus Drive. Is there a motion? Motion by Councillor Geisler to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councillor LeBlanc. Mr. Mulder, do you want to address this, or should we have our city engineer?
Sure, we'll let David.
Mr. Baugh.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. So this is a three-inch water line that serves the businesses between Cirrus Drive and Airport Road. The Public Works Department has had multiple breaks on that over the years, and most recently um this this spring and summer. So the the plan is that we are going to pipe burst this three-inch water line, and I'll pull a new six-inch water main through it, and then we'll reconnect the services to the existing buildings.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? If you if you have any public in- point to input to give, please step forward to the podium and state your name and address.
My name is Tim Kassnerick, and I live at fifty twenty-one Thompson Road. My only question is, who's gonna pay for it? Is that is it the city itself gonna pay for it, or is there like an easement, like water went through my property? I paid s- certain uh frontage for it?
Well, I'll we'll get to that question, but first this is a reconstruction of an existing water lane. But, Mr. Baugh?
Yeah, we were gonna pay for this using the water fund.
It's paid for by the city water fund. It is a
Which is funded by the
Funded by the people that pay for city water.
Yes.
So only city water customers fund that.
Thank you.
Is are there any other questions or public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one seven nine?
Mayor, if I may, um just double checking this, um um water improvements could also be funded by um sales tax. So I think we're scheduled to use the existing sales tax to pay for this. Just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
As I look as I look at it again, we could we could either use water fund or an existing sales tax. And looking at it, it's it's actually sales tax that's being
Thank you for that clarification. Any other public comment on the resolution approving the final plans and specifications for water main replacement project along Trunk Highway fifty-three? Roll call, please.
Councillor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Councillor Jones. Councillor Geisler.
Aye.
Councillor Jelly.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next is resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one eighty, resolution authorizing and directing mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver an agreement for consulting services for telecom engineering services with VMC LLC. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councillor Jelly. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councillor Jones. Mr. Mulder.
Um yeah, could have uh Ms. Kriego uh respond to that?
Yes, thank you, councillor and mayor. Um this is for um some contracted services that we have used other engineering firms in the past, but we're using this one as they have provided um a good proposal for services and costs. So we'd like to use them for as-needed services for um cell towers and other communication services.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one eighty? Any public input on the resolution authorizing the consulting services for telecom engineering services with VMC LLC? Roll call, please.
Councillor Jones.
Aye.
Councillor Geisler.
Aye.
Councillor Jelly.
Aye.
Councillor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next, next, resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one eight one. Resolution authorizing the City of Hermantown to support the Saint Louis County for County State Aid Highway thirteen, Midway Road, Railroad Crossings, Planning and Preliminary Engineering Project. Is there a motion? Motion by Councillor Geisler. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councillor Jelly. Mr. Mulder.
Again, I'll have uh Ms. Kriego respond to this one.
Yes, um for the past year, year and a half, the um Saint Louis County's been doing research on how to better the crossings and the in intersections for Highway two, Midway Road, and the railroads that um intersect those, and they are now furthering that study by getting some uh or attempting to get some uh grant money, and they would appreciate a letter of support from us, and so we are just supporting their endeavor.
Thank you. Uh any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one eight one? Is there any public input on the resolution authorizing the City of Hermantown to support the Saint Louis County Railroad Crossings Planning and Preliminary Engineering Project? Roll call, please.
Councillor Jelly.
Aye.
Councillor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Councillor Jones.
Aye.
Councillor Geisler.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next is resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one eight two. Resolution approving pay request number three for the North Star Ford Arena to Kraus Anderson Construction Company in the amount of two hundred forty-five thousand eight hundred fifty-four dollars and ninety-six cents. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Councillor LeBlanc. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councillor Jones. Mr. Mulder.
So this is a pay app for the uh arena project um for the last month.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Hearing none. Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on the resolu- resolution approving pay request number three for the North Star Ford Arena project? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one eighty-two? Roll call, please.
Councillor Geisler.
Aye.
Councillor Jelly.
Aye.
Councillor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Councillor Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one eighty-three, resolution approving change order numbers one and two for the North Star Ford Arena to Saint Cloud Refrigeration SCR Incorporated in the amount of fifty-six thousand five hundred forty dollars. Is there a motion? Motion by Councillor Geisler. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councillor Jones. Mr. Mulder.
So the first um change order is um an enhanced waste heat exchange, and basically what they'll be able to do is capture the heat from the ice plant to um use for other purposes in the arena. That cost of that project was uh a change order was twenty-two thousand five hundred. The second one is for kind of the ice plant startup and commissioning. As the plant gets installed um and gets operational, we want to make sure that we have um that the plant is operating appropriately and and the way it should, and also give the necessary uh training to the people that will operate it. Um so that change order um was adding that was thirty-four thousand and forty dollars.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Do we have any public input on resolution approving change orders number one and two for the North Star Ford Arena to Saint Cloud Refrigeration? Is there any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one eighty-three? Roll call, please.
Councillor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Councillor Jones.
Aye.
Councillor Geisler.
Aye.
Councillor Jelly.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one eighty-four. Resolution receiving bids and approving award of contracts for North Star Ford Arena and authorizing document preparation and execution for roofing scope seven H. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Councillor Jones. Do we have a second? Second by Councillor Geisler. Mr. Mulder.
So this uh bid scope was part of the second bid package, um but we did not award that um last month. Part because they were they rejected the bid, and we're looking at um making sure that we had a roofing project that would work well during the winter months. So this is um uh that contract.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one eight four? Any public input on the resolution approving bids and awarding contract for roofing for the North Star Ford Arena? Roll call, please.
Councillor Jones.
Aye.
Councillor Geisler.
Aye.
Councillor Jelly.
Aye.
Councillor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next is resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one eight five, resolution receiving bids and approving award of contracts for the North Star Ford Arena and authorizing document preparation and execution metal panel scope seven F. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councillor Jelly. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councillor Jones. Mr. Mulder.
Again, this scope was part of bid package two. Um there was some discussions back and forth about um whether that was a carpenters uh union job or a um sheet metal worker's job. Um the had discussions with the cause K A had construction with the union, and they were okay with awarding it to the low bid. So the carpenters will be doing this project, but um this was part of the scope that was um part of bid package two. And I think this is the last um major bid scope that we're working on.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Hearing none. Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on the resolution receiving bids and approving the award of contracts for the North Star Ford Arena and authorizing document preparation and execution for metal panel scope seven F? Is there any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one eighty-five? Roll call, please.
Councillor Geisler.
Aye.
Councillor Jelly.
Aye.
Councillor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Councillor Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next is resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one eighty-six. Resolution approving amendment to the construction contract with Kraus Anderson Construction setting the guaranteed maximum price. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Councillor LeBlanc. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councillor Jones. Mr. Mulder, since this is something we've all been waiting for, would you address it?
Sure. Um I said about a year ago that once we got to the building uh phase, um the construction phase, this project would go a lot smoother, and so let's go. We're starting today. Um this um is the guaranteed maximum price. They have all of the bids in. Um so that between materials and labor, um they will deliver the project for um twenty million nine hundred and one thousand five nine hundred and one thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars. We still have um money in there for all of our soft costs over and above that. Um and we also have um various contingencies in there to um for any unforeseen circumstances. But um this sets that guaranteed maximum price.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council?
I'll just say it was good to be at this point. It was definitely a rocky start, but it's nice to see them breaking ground and see it come to fruition.
Thank you. Anything else from council? Uh this is within budget, Mr. Mulder?
This is uh within their budget, what they had uh proposed about uh six months ago.
Thank you. Any other comment from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on the resolution setting the guaranteed maximum price for the North Star Ford Arena project? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one eight six? Roll call, please.
Councillor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Councillor Jones.
Aye.
Councillor Geisler.
Aye.
Councillor Jelly.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Mr. Mulder, is there any need to close session this evening?
There is not.
Then I will entertain a motion to recess. Do we have a motion?
Move to recess.
Motion by Councillor Jones. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councillor Jelly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you all.